I call the meeting to order for the April 25th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that everyone is present.
Wonderful. We're going to go into study session, so let's go into current business. The first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Kleiman, do you need any clarification regarding any items on consent calendar?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
I do not.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Just real quick, it's on the notes for, or the minutes for item 13, which is the General Plan Advisory Committee. Just wanted to put out real quick our, let's see, let me pull it up real quick. Jim Campbell did a great job, actually, I just wanted to point out. There's this weird issue in California law, it's not that weird, actually, it's a great issue, but there's this issue in California law that prohibits government entities, including cities, from spending money on advocacy work, and there was some discussion about doing just that. And then our deputy community development director stepped in and reminded folks that that would violate the law, so I just wanted to say kudos. It's exactly what we would be hoping you would do, so there you are. Thank you. Well done. Case, by the way, stands as me bat. I've written multiple articles on this, on the issue, so I'm very acquainted, so when I was reading through the minutes, I was hoping someone would say something, and then there you were. So anyway, thanks for doing that.
Excellent, and I have no clarifications needed. So let's move into the first item, which is a proclamation for National Library Week. I'll read the proclamation, and then have our library services director, Melissa Hartson, come up, and Paul Watkins. "State of Newport Beach proclamation: Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And libraries have long served as trusted institutions for people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds. And libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equity of access for all. And libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, I, Noel Blom, mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim National Library Week." Wonderful. A few words.
Good afternoon, Mayor Blom, members of council. Thank you so much for this recognition. This year's National Library Week theme is "The Story Goes On, There's More To The Story." That's certainly true for our library here in Newport Beach. We offer a wealth of resources, entertainment, programming, and we're just here for the community, so on behalf of the library, I just want to thank all of you for your support, your continued support of the library. Thank you for your involvement and participation in our National Library Week programming. This week, we look forward to seeing you at the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Paul Watkins, Chair of the Board of Library committees. Melissa said it all. She's very eloquent, and thank you for the honor very much. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, the next item is a discussion regarding a pilot program with homeowners associations to install private security cameras within the public right-of-way. Is this a staff report?
Yes, good afternoon, council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and Police Chief Cartwright is with me today to talk about this topic. So let me get set up here. So real quick, for a reminder for those just joining us, this began on March 14th, where Mayor Protem O'Neill asked to have an A item introduced, and that A item is on the screen here. Consider directing staff to develop a pilot program that allows for Newport Beach community homeowners associations, that represents 50 homeowners, to install solar-powered security cameras, signs, and other related improvements in the public right-of-way. So as we go into this, we're probably, it's relevant to start with your council policy. This is council policy L6, which controls encroachments in the public right-of-way. And this policy provides guidance and use of the public right-of-way. Out of the policy, the general rule, the general rule is that the public right-of-way is reserved for public uses and should not be diminished by the installation of private improvements. In the policy, there's also no direction for a policy on regarding cameras at this point. But I'll also point out that in the policy, there are rules and exceptions you can get, and a person can apply for an exception, the council will approve, and exceptions for various things like structures, walls, and things like that. So there's, there is a path forward. There's also from that, they can apply for an encroachment agreement with a waiver, and put in things that are outside the policy. So what we want to do is probably put out some ideas and thoughts for your discussion that you're going to have, and things that we'd probably need some guidance on. So the first thing you might want to think about is who's going to approve these requests. Now, you could have it done by the city council on a case-by-case, or you could modify your L6 policy. There's rules and guidance for staff to do administrative approvals in there. You want to know if there's going to be a fee required. Oftentimes, when we do work like this, or staff work in sighting and things like that, so you might want to include your thoughts about a fee. We're going to have to go out and look at possible sighting issues, and line of distance, and things like that. You probably want to give us some guidance on what kind of controlling agreement. We have a license agreement typically, and that controls the length of the pilot project, or the compensation or use of the right-of-way, responsibility for damage, utility, insurance, bonding, things like that, that we need in case an e-bike hits the pole, who's responsible for it? And then the removal of such items, should we decide that it's going to come out at a certain time. Those are some items you might want to look, think about. The other thing that's big with our community, obviously, is aesthetics, so we want to talk about standards of design and locations in the public right-of-way. Are we allowed to mount these on, they usually come on their own pole, but can we mount them on our streetlight poles or streetlight signs to reduce the sign clutter in the poles in the right-of-way? Do we allow wireless-only, solar-powered, or you want to talk about hardwiring these to our power system? And what kind of signs are required? There's probably some legal requirements for signage, but there's also, you can kind of overdue signs, as we find out. And then there's the privacy concerns that we're going to have to kind of figure out. Limit what cameras can view, and I bring this because when we put in our traffic cameras, we had lots of discussions about what are those cameras looking at, and how can you do it? So we want to know, are they directed, we want to make sure they're not looking in private residences and things like that. What can the cameras record? You know, these days, you can record, we have license plate readers, we can also figure out the type of vehicle and the movements, or people, we even have facial recognition, and would that be allowed to be recorded? And then I put in, limit the type of camera, because again, the rotating cameras, if you look at our traffic signals, we have rotating and zooming. I can actually zoom from the central dock up to Newport Coast and read license plates, and some of the cameras are that powerful, and you want to make sure we control that, where that's going and looking at. And then limit these recording images, things like that. We need to consider the security of the data. Require the HOA to ensure the data is secure. Again, I don't know the details on this, these are just things we'd want to talk about. Limit access. This is data collected in the public right-of-way, so I don't even know how the laws require about public records requests, but does the HOA provide the city if it's, there's an incident? Do they have to give it to anybody else? How long does the HOA keep it? Those are things you might want to think about, and give us some guidance. We'll also note, too, for those that, you probably all recall this, but in October 2020, the city council established an ad hoc residential crime and burglary advisory committee, and that committee is ongoing and meeting, as I understand. I don't know this committee, but I was told that it's meeting, and they have some directional points. They're working on educating the public on steps to prevent and defer crime, changes to programs, policies, procedures, and prevent and defer crime, and the ability to allocate funds for programs and policies and procedures, et cetera. And I think their recommendations are due back to the council possibly in July, and I think the chief would have to speak to that, because he would be knowledgeable of that committee. So there's, there's that committee that plays into it. And then, if you haven't seen these cameras, I have a couple pictures here, just want to show you. You've probably seen these around, in fact, I was driving down Newport Boulevard in Costa Mesa, and there's two right in the median, in front of Triangle Square, if you'd want to see them. This is a typical camera, this happens to be what they call a Flock, but there's lots of people that do this. This is a solar-powered camera, as you go into an HOA, and they're, they're kind of, they can stand alone like that, this one has a solar panel on it. We actually have some in the city that we've had code enforcement have to do, they've, people have put some in the right-of-way, we've had to move these, but here's one, kind of represents what it might look like, and that sign next to it's about 10 feet high, so you can kind of get a feeling for that. There's, we have our own neighborhood signs that we might want to embellish, or there's signs that come with it. But these cameras can be very discreet, too. There's some likes the one on the one that's just on a small pole, it's hardwired, you hardly notice, it's there, it's black. I've seen them up on streetlights, and they're hardwired into the streetlights, there's a couple examples there. But you could put them on our street poles, and they could still have a solar panel. And again, what that does is one less pole, one less thing in the right-of-way to look at or possibly hit. And then, we need to talk about signage, because I believe there's a requirement for signage, but it's a two-way sword, we want signs, but then I hear a lot about, we have too many signs. So you see one picture there, they've, they've added a lot of signs, but these are just different examples that we found out there, that we'd want to talk about and get some guidance on. And the relevancy of this, and I, we do have one request in from an HOA, that is actually wanting to install cameras in its community, and we, staff wasn't quite sure what to do with this, and I think that helped with the topic today, we're looking for some guidance. But they want to put cameras in. I will say, we've had requests before from HOAs, and most of the time, we try to work with them and have them put in, if they have a private property, they do it there. I know Babo Island has one on private property, they use, and some others, but this would be our first, if we did it in a public right-of-way like this, other than there is one out there we know that has actual license agreement, that we, we have worked out with that HOA. So, what are we looking for? We're looking for some direction tonight, and after your discussion, maybe we can take some notes on that, and who would approve it, councilor policy, do you want to charge a permit fee, thoughts on a license agreement, thoughts about aesthetics and how we do that, privacy concerns, how you might want to give us some guidance on that. These are the thoughts against summary. And Chief, did you want to add anything to that? Or turn it over to the council?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council, yes. There are a number of cities that have tried this, some have done it citywide, where the city incorporates the cameras on major feeders into their cities, and some just have them in private neighborhoods. I can tell you, in terms of effectiveness, it's not a mystery that it's been really effective for us to use Flocks from other cities, everywhere, from LA County to San Bernardino County and Temecula. So there's a lot of different options, if you were to choose to go with this. If I gave you a recommendation, I would say it would be good to have it at the intersections for the city. That would help us to attract people coming in and out, and we could add in neighborhoods along the way. That's the more robust way down the line, that if we get towards a real-time crime center type of approach. I know the ad hoc committee is meeting, they should be, as Mr. Webb pointed out, should be bringing it to council in July. I know that this topic is one of the things that they have on their list of recommendations, along with a number of other things.
And just one more thing, I had my staff research a little bit, and if you wanted some information on the number of HOAs, we currently have at least 61 HOAs that are over 50 residents that are non-gated, and there's 21 that are below that, that are non-gated, and then, of course, there's a gated one. I don't have a number on the gated, but they're in a different camp, because they've already got gates. So just some thoughts on how many of those might be affected.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yeah, thank you. So this issue has come up from time to time, not as much up in Newport Coast, because all the areas up there, for the most part, are gated, and when you go in, you're pretty much always getting your license plate red. The issue is more in the areas that are not gated in our area, and especially while we're trying to figure out how to do better, even in the neighborhoods, on how to reduce the property crimes that are increasing all across California. Certainly, we've seen it here. So one of the, one of the more proactive HOAs out there, especially when it comes to, paying attention to the neighborhood crime, has been Spyglass Hill. And so, they came and spoke to me, and then also to staff, and we were working through, trying to figure out, you know, how to, how to put up one of these cameras, and there just wasn't, could you go back and put, Dave, put up the map location? There wasn't a great, that one, there wasn't a, that's a go. There wasn't, there weren't great locations in a private area, but if you, if you kind of see how Spyglass works, there are really discreet entrances in, for the, for the Spyglass Hill area. And so, we talked about trying to work through maybe a test case, and it doesn't have to obviously be just Spyglass Hill, it's just that when they came forward to talk about this, you know, it made sense to at least talk to them in particular about trying to be a test case, because as you can see, you know, you only have four entrances, in and out, of a fairly large community, but in order to get those cameras in properly, they would have to be in the public right-of-way. And so the question is, what do they look like? Does the program work? And, and given that we really haven't done this much around town, and then, we're, we are going to be talking about whether the city should be doing this as well, made a lot of sense for us to, you know, come in and talk about this. So I will say, they're going to be, I think, I will have a different discussion, frankly, when, and I'm not sure where I am on this yet, when we get to the question of where the city, what the city should be doing, but I'm going to get to the privacy issue in just a moment. I think a lot of those questions that are put forward on the privacy slides have a lot more to do with when the city is talking about this than a private entity. But I'll just run through real quickly, at least my thoughts. I would rather modify L6, so that we can provide the authority to staff to work this through, especially on the trial basis. I, I don't want to go through a fee study quite yet. If we, if we pass this through, then we ought to go forward with it. Anytime you're doing the pilot program, it takes a little bit more staff time than you will when we really get it up and running, and so I'd like to not charge the, I'd like to not charge, you know, the pilot program folks significantly more, simply because they're the ones coming in and helping us out to figure out if this works. Yes, we should do a license agreement. I think we should do a license agreement anytime someone's using, frankly, our public right-of-way, and I think we do. I would go for minimal signage. I saw in one of the slides, a picture of a sign that had "Powered by Flock." I would, I would not want a company name on our signs, so I would, I would not allow for that. I would also make sure that they're all solar. I don't think that, I don't particularly want to start dragging in our electric power lines, if we can help it, so I'd like, I'd like it all to be solar. And my understanding, I'm going to look at the others, Bruce, when you talked with Flock, it's all solar that they're proposing? Yeah. So that's, that would be my preference, is to make sure that we're not trying to pull in city, city electricity. That alone is becoming increasingly difficult, if anyone's ever done, has done any construction at all lately. On the privacy side, because this is an HOA, and the city wouldn't be controlling the data, I'm less concerned about some of trying to put in a lot of the barriers, because it strikes me that if a, this, these cameras would be within the HOA community, and so if an HOA is starting to set up cameras specifically focused in on just one residence, that is going to be a problem for the HOA. Perhaps not as much for us. I mean, I think, obviously, within the, it should be clearly, clear that their, their primary focus is roads and license plates, so they'll, but that, and maybe that's, maybe that's the emphasis, is the primary, and it is more of an errand thing. Maybe the, it's sort of the language is something to the effect of the primary purpose of the cameras is the street. And then, in terms of what the HOA does with the data, I mean, if it was on private property, they'd, you know, they'd be able to do whatever they wanted with that data, within the law, of course. I think that's sort of the same deal. As long as the city doesn't take, you know, take it over and start actively monitoring it 24/7, which I don't understand that to be the, the anticipated use of this at all, but more along the lines of when a crime occurs, go into the HOA and just saying, hey, we'd like access, and then the HOA can provide us access. If that's the case, then it's under private hands, not public, and so I don't think it would be, I mean, I don't think so, at least subject to Public Records Act requests, but certainly, my privacy concerns are substantially diminished, if that's the relationship. And so, I do think we ought to move forward with this. I would limit, at least in the, I don't know what the number, the right number would be, but I'd like to limit this. We said, you said 61 HOAs are above 50 homes?
Yeah. We show 61 that are non-gated, above 50 residents.
Yeah. I'd probably cap it around, I don't know, five to 10 at most, at least on the initial phase, to start, because that's, that's still a lot, and, you know, trying to work it through and making sure it works, but that's, that'd be kind of my preference, would be to, you know, to get the ones that make the most sense. If we can have some kind of geographic diversity alongside that, that'd be great, so we can kind of get a sense of how different parts of the city are working. But that is my, those are my general thoughts, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to work this through, and I look forward to hearing the comments from fellow councilmembers.
And then, Councilmember Wigan?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem O'Neill for bringing this forward. It's something that I was interested in for quite some time, and had been inquiring about, and I knew that the ad hoc committee was looking at similar issues with this, so I appreciate it coming forward as a discussion today, and then hopefully at a, at a greater level, once the ad hoc wraps up. But for me, in District 3, there's not a ton of HOAs, but one of the residence groups out there, in Santa Ana Heights, they kind of started forming a impromptu kind of residence association, when some crime issues started to occur in their neighborhood. And so some residents took it to their liberty to install some of these Flock cameras in, in the neighborhood. They installed three, because there's three areas of entrance and exit to that neighborhood. So some of those photos that were shown were actually, I believe, from their site, and they just did it on their own, so I believe that's why Flock was mentioned, because that's who they went out and found it with. So I would like to see a greater expansion of this product throughout the city, and not limited to HOAs, because Santa Ana Heights doesn't have an HOA, and they don't have an ability to form an HOA. I think they would like to, and at one time, maybe discuss that, but didn't get too far with it. So I know at one time, they even considered gating their area, but that was because, prevented because they don't have an HOA. So, you know, I like what, like the port streets have. If you go down there, you can see these faux gate guards. These would be perfect to set up right into the port streets. It would be seamless, and that's, there's only four entry and exit points to the port streets. So there's parts of our city, Babo Island, there's one entrance, one exit, unless you have a boat, and I don't know what the life of crime on the boat, water is these days, but it exists, but as far as cars, there's, you know, only so much. So I get the privacy concerns. I think with Flock, it's great, because they're not filming your face, they're not filming your movements, they're just looking at license plates, in and out, wherever, and they can share that data with, between private, with the HOAs, with the city, with the county, at every level. And in fact, that was kind of a discussion I had yesterday. I was talking about public safety issues in Santa Ana Heights with Lieutenant Little, and he was saying, well, maybe we can look at some of the data from the private guys that had it in Santa Ana Heights, and share some of that data from the private to the city, and then find out if there had been anything. So I think it's a really good idea. I think my question maybe would be on, you know, what we do when we look at this, is Flock the leader? Are there a bunch of other entities out there? Do we, do we know what the best company is, and do we have to get an RFP specifically for Flock, or can that be addressed without going out to bid? And if we're doing it at a pilot project, does that process take a while, or is it relatively quick to get installed?
Just to comment on that, what I'm hearing, though, this would be an HOA-driven program, so they would come to us with, like, I think, the one on the screen is looking, talking to Flock. There are several providers, and I'd have to get the police to recommend, too, because if they're going to use it, it's got to work through their system, but I'm very naive, truthfully, on how many of these cameras work. It's a whole different world for me. But I'm sure there are others that provide that. So they'd have to propose us, and we'd probably run it through the police department, and say, can you work with these guys? Is it, does it meet the needs you're trying to do there? On that note, and just, you picked up on one thing, because as Mayor Protem O'Neill's talking about, these are HOAs that are formalized, that we can actually enter a license agreement with. When we have, we have a lot of informal ones, like Central Baboa, and Little Island, Big Island, things like that, that there might be other ways to do it. When I, when I was talking in some of the cities, I talked to Lake Forest, and they have a policy now, they're just starting to do homeowner association, but they actually kind of do some kind of donor thing, where the police run it or own it, and the HOA pays for it or something, so maybe there's a way for these non-formal HOAs to, to get in the program.
Yeah, because I want to make sure that if we're letting them have it, you know, we can access it anytime. I'm sure Spyglass is not going to hold back if we're, PD's asking, saying, hey, we'd like the data, but I want to protect that and ensure that, that we have any ability to get it anytime we want. And, you know, do you think there would be, you know, when we get it and look at it from a larger scale, how much staff time, and that's something maybe we, we look at and study other cities, what they're dealing with, when we look at it for a citywide effort, you know, see what Costa Mesa says, what other cities say, what other states and counties and anywhere we're looking at, to get kind of, one, best practices, how they make it work, you know, do they do solar, do they do, you know, is it, can they make it more hidden? Is it more loud and boisterous, and say, hey, you're on camera, you know, watch, you know, watch out, and do preventive crime that way? But then, as far as what the staff time entails, as far as PRA requests, you know, how many husbands and wives are looking for their spouse cheating, you know, like, that gets calls. I know you get calls for that on the cameras we have throughout the intersections. So, you know, we don't want to put something that also wastes a lot of staff time with filing these requests through private investigators and attorneys calling all the time, you know, demanding the intel, and what can we do to prevent it? So maybe a best practices case from different cities, to find out what works, what doesn't work, and then we can kind of take the best of all of those practices. So those are just my general thoughts, but I want to see a greater expansion of this throughout the city. There's a lot of communities that have only one or two or three entrances and exits that don't have HOAs. These would be prime places for those, because there is, especially in Dover Shores, West Cliff area where I live, I'm getting a lot of, you know, chatter about burgs and break-ins and car, you know, handle jiggle or guys that open up and pull things out of their car. So knowing who's coming in and out of those neighborhoods is definitely on the top of residents is mine, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you. So first of all, I too want to thank Mayor Protem O'Neill for bringing this forward. I think we're sort of, maybe even on the later side in, in looking at this option, and I am certainly supportive of any additional resource for our police department and for the community that helps us prevent crime, and just generally be more proactive. And to that point, Chief, maybe you could just touch on this Flock system and systems like it, but particularly Flock, and the opt-in system that allows law enforcement agencies to get data in real time. If you could just kind of speak to that briefly, I've done a fair amount of research on this for our association, because we were one of the kind of early adopters. So I have an understanding of what's out there. There are different types of license plate reading, cameras and different softwares, but I know Flock in particular, again, does have a system that allows you to kind of connect, there's connectivity to other jurisdictions that you can opt into as a, as a law enforcement agency, correct?
Correct, yeah. We have partnerships with other law enforcement agencies in the region. We also have a, an MOU with Flock that was signed by my predecessor, just to prepare for this type of situation. It's not a real-time necessarily solution, but as soon as a crime is reported, we can immediately go to the cameras. We need an investigative predicate to look at that footage, but I don't anticipate any pushback from residents. I know that they're all on board with getting this as an assistive tool for us, but that is the way it would work, yes.
So I guess I see that as two-pronged. It's both proactive, again, and hopefully, some kind of intervention, maybe not in, in perfect real time, but pretty responsive. And then, of course, and as it's worked for us, and I think other communities that have used it, when there is a crime, whether it's a package theft or something, it also assists detectives in locating the individual responsible for that crime. detectives in locating the individual responsible for that crime, and hopefully, you know, bringing that individual to, to justice, if you will. Just some of the other points that were talked about. So in terms of privacy, I think we're in a world now where there's very little expectation of privacy, pretty much anywhere, you know, with the proliferation of cellphone usage and cameras everywhere. People drive around with vehicle cams. Almost everybody, or certainly a majority of people, have some kind of camera on their residence that could be pointed at the public right-of-way. But obviously, the difference here is we're talking about installing the camera within the public right-of-way versus having a camera on private property that's pointed at the public right-of-way. But again, I just think that this is sort of the expectation, no matter where you go, is assume that you're being filmed, because you probably are or will be. Certainly, if you're going to do something of, of note, that's going to get some attention. And also, speaking to the fee, I agree, I don't think that there should be a hefty fee associated with this, particularly during the early phase in, of adoption or, or in a pilot program. I do think it should be some kind of nominal fee, so that there's consistency with our other licensing agreements. But again, just, just something nominal. And those are really my comments for now. Again, I would, I would like to see this, you know, much beyond just associations, but, but adopted community-wide.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem O'Neill, for bringing this together, and city staff on, on putting this together. You mentioned Costa Mesa has them, and they're public right-of-way that the city maintains. Is that true?
They're in Newport Boulevard, right in the middle, in front of Triangle Square. We, other cities have them in the public right-of-way, and there's a lot of cities actually own these cameras now. I had a whole list from Flock, they provided me. So they're, they're prevailing out there.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll have a bunch of questions on the privacy concerns if we get down that path, which just sounds like we probably will, and maybe for good reason. We can talk about costs and everything later. How many HOAs, or how many, like Cameo Shores, how many neighborhoods in Newport have these already? Do you know that number?
I don't. I don't know. Chief, do you know, I know there's a couple that we've taken code enforcement actions, mainly because they're in the public right-of-way without council's permission and a permit.
Santa Ana Heights?
Santa Ana Heights is one of them. I did mention, there's one HOA that has a legal camera. We have an encroachment agreement and approved license agreement by council, in that there are no other agreements that I know of out there. There are some cameras that we've had over the years, people have asked, and we've had them put on private property. So.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, you think in my district, in District One, you look at like, something like Peninsula Point, one way in, one way out, it seems like this would make a lot of sense in an area like that. Unlike Mayor Protem O'Neill, I do think the hardwired might look better, in the sense that it's possible, if we have an existing pole there, and there's got wiring in there, and we can make it look less invasive, maybe that's something to think about. But again, if there's not, I would agree, we don't need to pull wiring in, but.
And to that point, the only reason why I brought that up is, we're in the unique position as a city. We own our streetlights, so we don't have to go to Edison and get permission. So you pay for the power anyway, and if you chose to do that, there's an option for you. So.
Okay. Yeah, that's something I can, like, it seems like it's a little bit cleaner, maybe, if there's not a big solar panel there. So that's it, my two cents.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
You're right. It is, for sure, cleaner. My, the reason I've mentioned that is simply to make sure that we're not, we're not dealing with the pulling of the wires. So to your point, Dave, if we get to the point where we are adding this on to our, our own poles, my guess is that we're not going to be approving that for, well, I wouldn't want to approve that, for example, putting these on to our, our own light poles for the private organizations. If we get to the point where the city is doing it, then it makes sense to me that that might be something we do on a more hardwired scale. I'm talking more along the lines of trying to figure out how these things work on the upfront. And then to the, to Councilmember Wagon's point, yeah, I, I fully expect that this is going to go beyond HOAs. The reason that this initial pilot program idea is for HOAs, because, to two points, one of them is what Dave mentioned, which is actually having the contracts, the license agreements, you have to have them with somebody, and having them with the, with a formal organization is a lot easier. And the other is accountability. One of the challenges, and so the nice thing about this is, an HOA is allowed to speak for all, legally allowed to speak for all of the homeowners in, in the area. It gets a little tricky when you have a handful of people coming forward and saying, we, we're going to now informally represent everyone. If you get just one person complaining, the question is going to be, how do we handle that up here? That's probably more of a council issue than it is a, a staff issue. And we deal with that from time to time in a bunch of our council policies. You know, for example, when people want to have speed bumps in their neighborhoods, that's something that comes up from time to time. And so it's really, we'd have to have some kind of submission, submission process for that, to make sure that the entire area is now notified of it. I'm not saying we can't do that. We have precedent for it. I just think in, at an initial trial level, that's, that's, that was what my thought process was on why we would just do an initial trial on HOAs, and then expand it. Because at that point, it's really just applying one area of council policy to another area of council policy. So I wanted to at least highlight that. And then to the, to the point about privacy, understood, agreed. I, I, I have to, I, I used to think we had a lot more privacy, and then someone posted a picture of me eating a doughnut at Rose Bakery on social media. I'm not sure why they did that. But.
Was it a cinnamon roll?
Yeah, no, it was a cinnamon roll.
Sorry, looked like you were enjoying it.
But, yeah, no, that happens sometimes. Anyway, but I, you know, I do think that there's still a, there is, there's still expectations of privacy. I just want to make sure that we're working that through. It, you know, when the government does something, it is different than when a private party does it. And so that's why, when we're working through on the, on a license agreement, I'll just work that through. So anyway.
Mayor Protem, could I just suggest one thing?
Yep.
We talked about putting them on city poles. I get the wiring part. Would you be open to having a solar panel, like that one picture in a city pole? And my thoughts on that are, you can put it up temporarily, it's not going to affect our electrical system. It's one less pole in the right-of-way to hit. And truthfully, if they hit the pole, it's still our liability, because the camera had nothing to do with it. But if we put another pole in, the HOAs now become liable for something in the right-of-way. So, just thinking about.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point. I mean, if, part of my thought process also is, if it doesn't work, I don't want to, you know, push them through and, and wiring up. But, okay, I'm good with that. Yeah, yeah, I'm open to that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Grant?
Just briefly, I, I'm also in favor of a pilot program to analyze the efficacy of this kind of a thing, and especially with respect to public safety, which is, you know, so important that we stand the cutting edge. I would just comment that I think that we do need to have a little bit more input from the city attorney about how this would affect us from a public records and a privacy standpoint, and our obligation to the public. I, I think it's easy to say, well, it's not us, it's somebody else. But this is sort of a hybrid, where we're in the public right-of-way, we actually will be using the information, we are anticipating it for that purpose. And so allowing the public to stand in our shoes may or may not shield us from obligations. And so we just should adequately assess that before we move past maybe a pilot program. Obviously, we can take our time and, and look at it from a lot of angles. But that's definitely an important piece of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon?
Yeah, so I think for today, I'm 100% on board with allowing HOAs, 50 homes or greater, the ability to.
Are there any on the cusp of 50? Like, you know, we'd be worried that we're excluding somebody, because they're like at 48 or something? Is there?
I don't know those numbers, but we could, you're only talking 10 or 12, so let's see where it goes. And if we have someone like that, we can bring it to your thoughts.
And then can we notify the ones that maybe aren't aware of what our action is being tonight? Or, I guess it was a study session, so we're not really fully voting on that. But maybe we can figure out a notification system to say, you know, hey, we're allowing this now in, in, in your neighborhood, so that they can test it out?
If you so choose, once we get a program that you're okay with, maybe we start with the current one that's in for a permit and get something. Then if that works the rules for you, then we could send out a notification, all the HOAs, if they want to, again, we're talking 10 or 12 of them. So.
Yeah. Yeah. I think if we're going to start a pilot, it'd be good to try a couple different neighborhoods. So if nobody's paying attention to this, and at least we could let a couple others know, that might be prime candidates. Maybe the chief can look to a few of the HOA, you know, look at a grand map of all the areas and say, hey, this one would be a good one to implement. Let's reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in, in jumping on board. Otherwise, thumbs up.
Great. So, you know, my thoughts on this are, as I can kind of run through them in my head, the neighborhoods that would best work with this, and then a little buffer. I think if we started somewhere in the neighborhood of 10, and kind of went from there, I think it gives us a, a good amount of people to go and start finding out, all right, hey, this is working. It's not like we'll be locked into that, but I think it's a good number for us to start. So we could do 10 of these. I'd be okay with that. The other quick question I had, is there a way to just do license plate reading without the recording? And I'm all for the recording as a separate piece. But, you know, for me, I, I would love to know that we could read license plates in real time, and not necessarily just have it be the camera reading, but then get that information to the police to say, stolen car, you know, whatever. Is, is there a program that doesn't actually record it, but then feeds that information, last known spot? With these, have you heard of anything like that, Chief?
I haven't done a comparative analysis on different products, but I am aware that there are strictly license plate readers that do, you know, they have to be entered in the stolen vehicle system or a felony warrant. But once that plate passes that camera, it alerts the police department. There's no footage, it's just an alert direction of travel.
And I, I like the idea of that, because it kind of keeps us away from the public records request piece of that, and retaining a lot of footage and gets that information immediately used. So.
We'd have to, just on that note, we'd probably have to put in the license agreement work with Flock, because Flock did tell me that, I think they do record, because they, in our discussions, are like, well, we see a vehicle, and we found that that vehicle was in that neighborhood in Buena Park two weeks ago. So there must be some level of retention in data.
And I'm for that as well. I just, if there is something that could go directly to police, I, I think we'll look at this on every part. I'm going to go to Mayor Protem, and then we'll go out to public.
Yeah, I'll be real quick on this. I agree. I could live, I could live with a cap of 10. That's probably a little higher than I was going for, but that's, I could see that as a good pilot. And then, Aaron, to Councilmember Grant's questions about privacy, and then we keep coming back to, if a private actor is, you know, on the recording side, how, how does that, how does that thought process play out in terms, and not so much that we want to shield things, obviously, from public when it comes to records, but do these count as public records?
So as long as they're maintaining the data, and it's not part of the city as separate, and we're not controlling it, then that wouldn't be a record that would be subject to the Public Records Act, in our opinion. And that's probably the reason to keep it under their jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Let's go out to the public on this item. So any public comments, just feel free to come up, head on up to the podium. And there's two mics, if there's a few, feel free to stand at each one, and we can roll right through this.
Mayor Bloom and City Council. My name is Bruce Horn. I'm a 20-year resident of Spyglass Hill and the current HOA president. Several board members are here today and interested homeowners, just to lend support to approving the placement of license capturing cameras on public property in Newport Beach. So a couple of things that weren't talked about. Privacy is very important to us. Also, we had a long discussion on our board about that. So we agreed with Flock. Nobody's going to have access to our information, other than the city and Newport Beach Police Department. There'll be no third party, nobody on the board. It's only going to have access to the police department. So that was one. The second thing is, the information is only stored for 30 days. And after 30 days, it's destroyed. So we have no intent of keeping this data. In the case of Spyglass Hill, there's no Plan B for us. We don't, we, we're not allowed to place cameras on private property. Our HOA does not own any property in the community. We have an easement for maintaining the slopes down to the parkways. So we check with our attorney, and there's no place to put it on, on private property, for us. So our only option is the solar cameras in the parkway. And although the police department does a great job in Newport Beach, burglaries still happen. And hundreds of thousands of dollars have been lost due to these burglaries. And our homeowners are anxious and want cameras and signage as an additional layer of crime prevention in, for, for the homeowners. The prime locations for placing these solar cameras are in the parkways. We've got four main entrances off of Spyglass Hill Road, and there's plenty of room for the cameras in the parkway. We're not asking for financial support. We're asking the council to allow placement of the cameras, so our homeowners feel safer. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Lee Pearl with Balboa Island. And today, I'm not your burglary task force member. I'm going to be a Balboa Island Improvement Association representative. And I appreciate the conversation and the direction that the council's taking. I think our island has had LPR cameras longer than anybody, and Peninsula Point does also. And we've never had a request from anybody except the police department. And we pretty much have a, a policy, we would have to release it if we received a court order, but we've never received one. And we've solved a lot of crimes with our camera system. I was also going to suggest to the council that Balboa Island is probably your best demonstration site, because we could use your light pole, and that's where we need it, for one camera. And it would capture both directions, license plates have minimal, wouldn't really hardly be noticeable. And I think we would be, our associations would be willing to pay for it. So if you get to the point to have demonstration areas, ours is probably one of the best. The Ferry, Nate, who is a manager of the Ferry, has cameras all over the place for license plate capturing, if anybody's floating over to Balboa Island. But I appreciate the, the discussion today, and also, the task force will be bringing forward recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, members. I'm Therese Lauthback. I live at 53 Cambria in Spyglass Hill. And I'm very, very, very embedded in Spyglass. I've been there since 2000. I was on the board for six years with Bruce. And it's just a wonderful community. But I was burglarized soon after we moved in. And I felt so violated, as others have. There's three on our street who were burglarized. So I started Neighborhood Watch Program. And it's still in effect and doing a great job. We have 19 block captains, so somebody for every street. They have a contact list. We give them information from Sarah Van Herschel and about the crime reports every month. They're very vigilant in getting this information to everybody in their street. They're watching out for suspicious people and cars. So, in effect, they're doing a wonderful job. We've had meetings with the police department coming to my house, with Will O'Neill, and all my block captains. We have like 40 people. What can we do? We're still having burglaries. What can we do? Can we improve the Neighborhood Watch Program? Well, yes, everybody can improve their program. But you know, it's just not enough. We can't have eyes everywhere. We have slopes in our community. They come up the slopes, these burglars, at night or after 5:00. They put a ladder up, and they go to the second story, and they come in the window, and they take your goods. I have lost over $100,000. So we really need your help. I'm very much in favor of this program. I've talked to several people in the police department, and especially the police chief, Cartwright, they're in favor of the program. They want to help us. They want to work with us, we want to work with them. So I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor Bloom. My name is John Lamb, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Port Streets HOA. My associate and I just happened to notice that this was on the agenda for today, and we thought we would just come by and see what it was about. If you're, I noticed someone did mention that Port Streets is a possibility for entrances. If you are interested in pursuing us as a potential pilot, we would be happy to entertain that. I haven't discussed it with the rest of the board yet, but we would be very interested in entertaining that, if you would like us to be a pilot.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Bloom, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding the proposal for the signage, I would suggest, if you're allowing this in the public right-of-way, at a minimum, the sign should say who is watching us and what data they're collecting. I believe, under the California Code, actually, any operator of a automatic license plate reading system has to have a written policy for who has access to it, what they're collecting, what they're using it for. And presumably, that written policy would be available. But you would not know that unless you know who is operating the camera. And if you see it in a public right-of-way, you would normally assume it was And if you see it in a public right of way, you would normally assume it was the city. The only other thing I can think of that we allow on the city right of way is cell phone installations, and those are required to have signage indicating who is operating it. It probably will not come as a surprise to you that I'm the only non-member who attends the meetings of the Residential Crime and Burglary Ad Hoc Committee. At a recent meeting, one of its members who just spoke to you, mentioned a recent visit to the city of Beverly Hills where kind of as Councilmember Kleiman was suggesting, the city apparently has cameras everywhere and actually has access to private cameras, and they have a massive police control center, command center, where they have multiple monitors and can track anybody anywhere in Beverly Hills as long as they're outside their house, and in fact, can track them when they're inside some private buildings. That committee member thought that was wonderful, and I don't doubt that if our police could track all of us everywhere and knew what we were doing at every moment, they could solve every crime. But there is a little conflict between this and our California Constitution, the very first paragraph of which, Article 1.1, says that as free and independent people, we have an inalienable right to privacy. And that did not seem to me exactly that people of Beverly Hills have privacy. I don't particularly have a problem if a gated community on their own property puts up this and does whatever they want with it, but in non-gated communities, I thought these streets are dedicated to the public, and anything like this is giving the impression that the public streets are for the residents and non-residents are kind of less welcome on a public street than anybody else. I have a little trouble with that. And as to having control or less control, I think we actually have less control. We don't know what these private actors, maybe Spyglass Hill is great and has all their agreements, we don't know what the other ones might be doing with the information. As to the storage, I'm not sure you're aware, we have a policy for our city's police cameras, and I believe at your last meeting in the records retention, you approved storing that data for two years. Sounds like a very long time. And if you read that policy at the end, as the Public Records Act request, it says the license plate reading collected by the city has confidential information and is not subject to Public Records Act requests. Whether that's legal or not to do that, I do not know, but that's what our policy says. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this? Anyone else want to talk on this item? Wonderful. We're going to bring it right back up here. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, a couple of things. The public comments made points that I had forgotten to mention. Definitely prohibit facial recognition as part of the license agreements. Just, I want to make sure we're explicitly saying that. To Lee's point about the Balboa Island Improvement Association, look, if we end up with less than 10 and they wanted to come in and make the pitch to us, they would probably have to, I would suggest they'd have to go through a council meeting so that we at least have that publicly noticed to the world. But perhaps that makes sense, I'm not sure, but I don't, I'm not sure how to deal with that. To their, to be fair to them, if we're going to do a trial basis on a non-HOA, that's a pretty good one, but I'm not, I'm not sure I'm there yet. So, John, real quick, on Port Streets, would love to have your application. I don't think we're going to pursue anybody to try to do this, but if you would like to go back to your board and talk to them and let them know that we're, you know, we're talking about this, then I do think that Port Streets would be an ideal candidate for this. I suspect you'd probably have a lot of support. But maybe not, I'm not sure. But yeah, I think so too. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up. We're probably not going to come to you, but if you'd like to come to us, we'll, and if you want to provide Dave your contact afterward, I'm sure we can work that through. And then just, I want to say just one real quick, thank you publicly to Spyglass Hill Neighborhood Watch. They are phenomenal, and I usually, and oftentimes are held up as kind of a gold standard when it comes to Neighborhood Watch. So when the Irvine Terrace community was getting hit really hard for a little bit there, and they wanted to go create their own Neighborhood Watch, they actually were sitting in on Neighborhood Watch programs in Spyglass. So I appreciate the efforts here. So anyway, those are my follow-up thoughts on that. Anyway, thanks again to my colleagues on the discussion.
Councilmember Wiegand.
Yeah, just to hit back on that, Mayor Protem, I think if the chief sees some candidates out there, I think we should be proactive and ask them if they have any interest. I don't know if all of them are paying attention, if the Port Streets just happened to be paying attention today, we just recruited one, but if they're not watching today's meeting or reading the news, which they probably will be, but I'd like to have the opportunity to have you sit down and see if there's anything that might be a good candidate for this program.
Wonderful. Dave?
Mr. Mayor, I had one question that may be clarification. I did hear the council direction was to not probably charge for the permitting encroachment on these pilot programs. There is a precedence on the license agreement that the current HOA is paying 250, I'm sorry, $270 per camera per year for use of the public right of way, and I would just want to get some council direction. Would you be wanting to keep that in the current license agreement, but waive all the permit fees at the pilot program level?
You want to jump into that one, Mayor Protem? You look like you want to say something.
Yeah, that was such a one-off. I know which program you're talking about, that was such a one-off. Since we're trying to work this through and, you know, actually get the information, I don't want to make it cost prohibitive for our HOAs right now. I suppose the answer to that, Aaron, is maybe we, maybe we, maybe we do what Councilmember Kleiman said and have relatively nominal fees associated with this, but, you know, with the open understanding that once we're done with the pilot program, it comes back to us for a decision on how we actually structure the fees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we could have some nominal fee for the use of the right of way, but not charge a permit fee?
Not yet. I mean, when it comes back, we'll have to, but that's probably, that's also, you know, we'll also have to probably wrap that into a speed study of some kind too, but, yeah, okay. That's a good question, appreciate that.
And to follow up then on that, is there a thought on a term of the pilot program, five years, because that'll affect the fee when they come back? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, I think like any pilot program, the idea is that we're putting this forward for a little bit, see how it works for everyone. You know, we'd like it to work for the residents, but we're also not trying to put out a contract that's going to be five years. I think maybe a year is a great place to start, kind of see how everything's worked out, get some data on the backend, bring it back, and then we're happy to do a renewal for longer, if that's something that's working well, and the police have the same thing.
I agree. But Bruce, would you mind coming up to the mic for just a second, since you've been having these discussions? So when you talk to the reps, you're talking specifically to Flock, but when you're talking to the reps, what's the expense that an HOA goes into? Are you renting the cameras from them or are you buying them?
It's a lease agreement.
Okay. Did they give you a minimum or maximum amount of time?
No, there was a charge per camera.
Yeah, my guess is they're going to want to work with you on this since, if this works there, they'll probably have a little more business.
Well, we were already downstream, we had already bought the cameras.
Oh, okay.
And we got stymied when they, we couldn't get permits. So we actually just got our money back from Flock, so we're...
But now you're going to be able to talk to them about a lease?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Like I said, they'll probably want to work with you. I agree, 12 months? Yeah, I agree. Okay. On the, at least on the trial side. Cool, thanks Bruce.
Wonderful. Councilmember Wiegand.
No, you might not have turned me off.
Oh, I, see? Perfect gentleman. Wonderful. So staff, we have direction on that and feeling good across the board? Wonderful. Do you need a show of hands on this? Okay, straw, we'll get straw bid on this.
Unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. Let's move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please. Anybody with comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please head on up.
Mayor Blum and just Steve Fokes here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm a 25-year resident of Newport Beach in the Port Streets, and I'm on the Board of Directors in Phase One Harbor View. We're here today actually to talk to you about safety in our community. And years ago, we looked into as a, as a board and as a community, having these cameras, and for a number of reasons, we didn't go forward with it. So it'd be interesting to see what our community thought about it now, these years later, and we have some history on some things. So what we're, what we're really here today besides the cameras is to talk to you about safety in general. And we have had a significant problem with July 4th, and a little bit less with Halloween, and a lot of it is e-bikes and huge rocket bombs that go off in our main park. I don't know if you're all familiar with the Port Streets, but we have public property that goes down the center of our community for about a mile. And in the center of this, we have a big field that's the size of two football fields. And attached to that is Anderson Elementary School, which we're very proud of. I have to tell you that we've heard this from many, many people. At July 4th last year, it was like a war zone on our major field. Rockets were going off that were the sound of bombs, and one dog died because it couldn't get breath from being so terrorized. We watched children running off the park because they were so scared. I remember one little girl saying, Daddy, Daddy, take me home. There was a big fire in our public restroom that's right next to our clubhouse. We have a lot of homes around this park that have wood shake roofs, and then there was a fire set in a dumpster that was further from the park. I know the police really try and help, but I know they're overwhelmed on the 4th of July. We have rented five light towers, high light towers, to illuminate the park. This year, we've had two and three in the past. So we're here today to try and ask for as much of a partnership as we can get with the city for our, our public park, and to see if we can stem the tide of this tremendous nuisance that mostly comes from teenagers in the park. I write a newsletter every month, and the big topic is going to be the 4th of July, and to ask parents to parent, because that's really what we need. More than anything too, we need you to understand and work with us on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, Philip Bettencourt, a neighbor here at 23 Corporate Plaza, also the past president of the Camera Rich Newport Coast Community Association. And in that regard, in all seriousness, I've also been the president of the Bermuda Dunes Security Association in the desert that has 15 sub-associations. So we've got some pretty good policy and regulatory documents I'm going to send along to your staff, and I think that you'll find that helpful. Secondly, I wanted to just add my cheerleading notes to the library, and particularly to the friends of the library. Do you know what re-gifted books bought at the book sale? We support a couple of small, of small resort libraries, and we come to the door with a box of books from the very well-read Newport Beach constituency. It's the best, and I salute all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Any other speakers on agenda, non-agenda items? Wonderful. Seeing none, Mr. Harp, give me a closed session announcement.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The City Council adjourned a closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding potential litigation threatened by the California Coastal Commission related to fencing by Balboa Beach, to meet with the city's real property negotiators, regarding negotiations with Mr. Palmer Lucky related to a portion of the public right of way at 929 Zurich Circle and 944 Vialito in Newport Beach, and to meet to discuss the performance of the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. All that's on the agenda under items 4A through C. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. We are adjourned until 6:00 PM regular meeting. Thank you. Call the meeting to order for the April 25th regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Ms. Harp, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session report this evening.
Wonderful. We'll move on to the invocation by Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Laurie, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for the ability to make decisions tonight. We ask that you grant us the wisdom to make those decisions. We ask that you watch over those people who watch over us, in particular, our fire and police officers up on the front lines there. We ask that you watch over the residents of Newport Beach, please keep them safe. We ask you watch over our visitors as well. These things we ask on my name. Amen.
Councilmember Kleiman, will you listen to the pledge?
Pray to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, notice the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Now, it's the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any announcements or reports?
Just a quick airport update. Mayor Blum, staff and I met with our, maybe not so new anymore, airport director, John Wayne Airport. We are extremely encouraged by her commitment to the surrounding community, especially Newport Beach residents who are impacted by the airport. We had also a very positive aviation committee meeting, and the mayor and I are looking forward to a productive airport lobbying trip to DC at the end of this week.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend our police department's promotions and swearing in for new and transfers with a lot of my cohorts up here, and it was an incredible experience and one I was happy to be a part of, and I'm just so proud of our first responders and all that they do. And if you have a chance to go to one of those, I'd highly recommend it. Also attended the Oasis volunteer brunch, and with a lot of my fellow council members, we served brunch to all those volunteers, and Newport Beach is a special place because of all the volunteers, and especially at Oasis, so I was happy to be there. Also did a tour with the Santa Ana River Trail, and also worked on some sand replenishment things on that side of the west side of Newport Beach. Our water quality committee meets again May 4th, so if you're available, I'd recommend showing up if you're interested in water quality and sand replenishment. And then yesterday, I attended with our district attorney, Todd Spitzer. He hosted the annual crime victim ceremony over in Santa Ana. So I went with Mayor Protem O'Neill and got a chance to speak with some of the crime victims and all that they're doing with state legislators. And finally, the Newport Beach Foundation is co-hosting in partnership with another local charity, a polo tournament. So Balboa Village, if you have the opportunity on May 13th, we're going to be down by the Balboa Pier and the grass there, and look for an opportunity to raise a lot of money for local charities in Newport Beach. So hope to see you there. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
I had a very pleasant two weeks out in the community, and I'll go quickly through some events. Also, I'm very encouraged by the amount of volunteers and activism that we have in our community. Speak Up Newport hosted our former mayor, Nancy Gardner, on April 12th, where she did a review of the general plan update process. That was very informative. It is on the Speak Up Newport website, and I encourage people who are interested in that process to go ahead and watch that link. It's very educational. On Thursday, April 13th, the CDM Chamber held a presentation on the proposed Civic Hall. Many know that is the library lecture hall, but I think it's being termed the Civic Hall, and that was hosted by Jerry Capell, the foundation director. Again, another opportunity for residents to find out what's going on in our community and potential improvements that might be had, and, you know, I really encourage people to get out there and attend some of these events. On Friday, April 14th, I was honored to speak at Oasis Sailing Club's opening day. That is a wonderful group of people that are out on our harbor, and the Oasis Sailing Club does a great job in bringing seniors out onto the harbor, so highly encourage, again, people to understand that program, and if you're eligible to check it out, it's wonderful. I, with Joe Stapleton and others on the dais here, attended two of the police promotion and swearing in ceremonies this last week. You can see the pictures up there. It was a wonderful opportunity to understand our police officers and their families and... It was a wonderful opportunity to understand our police officers and their families and, you know, all the promotions and speeches were very, very inspirational. As Joe mentioned, it's something for anybody to attend and understand what's going on with our public safety officers. I also attended with Joe the Oasis volunteer brunch. Oasis Senior Center does an amazing job for our community. There's literally hundreds of volunteers, and it was a great honor and pleasure to be there as a council member to serve these volunteers who serve all year long. On Saturday, April 22nd, more pictures, the corporate yard was opened up on Superior to the public. Hundreds of residents lined up to participate in Earth Day. It was an exciting day to see our city staff and work. There was partnerships with some high school students. There was the ability to bring paper to shred. E-waste was collected. In fact, there was 33,000 pounds of paper that was shredded, almost 9,000 pounds of e-waste collected. Every resident was allowed to pick up five bags of compost. We distributed 77,000 pounds of compost. And these partnerships with CDM High School, the Mayor's Youth Council, CRNR, Paper Cuts, California Electronics, they are very meaningful partnerships on a day like that when the residents really get to come out, protect the environment, and enjoy all that our city has to offer. So I was very honored to be there. Last I'll just mention, I mentioned last time we were here, East Bluff Community did a wonderful thing for us. They funded a butterfly garden in their community. They had a grand opening this last Saturday, and Blue Heron Park is now going to be hosting, hopefully, thousands of monarch butterflies and other pollinators that are going to come through our community and make not only our community, but the world, a better place to be. So thank you all for all those wonderful events.
Thank you. Councilmember Wigan.
Councilmember Grant handled most of my reports, so I have none.
Wonderful. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I also attended with my fellow council members the police swearing-in ceremony. And it is one of my, it's so compelling because you see these young people getting their badge and becoming sworn officers. And they're, they are making a pledge to protect us and go places and do things that most of us wouldn't want to do at times. And I just think they're heroes in the making. So it's a great thing, and all of them with their families and the whole thing. It's very poignant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yep. In addition to everything just described, I can't remember, Councilmember Kleiman mentioned it, but we had the CDMRA, Councilmember Kleiman and I reported, and the mayor spoke. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Normally, I glaze right over these, but I actually have a couple of slides and one other thing to add. I did get to do fire ops training, which was awesome. And I think most of the people actually up on this dais, or at least quite a few of them, have already done it as well. Councilmember Stapleton did it as well, but I beat his time up the ladder by a good amount. So I just thought that was worth noting. He was a little slow and a little nervous, but all right, let's move on to these slides.
You're on the kitty.
I think the chief could tell you about that. ADU website. So we've had a lot of talk in the past about ADUs in the city. The city's launched a new website. ADU is accessory dwelling units, kind of little granny flats is what we used to call them in the back of houses. We're trying to make it easier, and I think it's important, important first step in kind of what we're doing here. So the city website has a getting started to renting ADUs. It'll guide homeowners through every phase of the process. The site also includes case studies, floor plans, information on city incentives, and many other resources. It can be reached at newportbeachca.gov/ADU. Wonderful. And I think I have one more. Okay, this one, this one is important, even though most of the people sitting in the audience actually are either on a board or commission or work in the city. But for the seven people listening online, one of them's my wife, we have open seats, and this is big. And, you know, pass the information along, please do. We like it when a lot of people apply for our open vacancies on city boards and commissions. You know, we want a big breadth of people in the city. And so the city's now accepting applications to serve on advisory boards and commissions. It's a great opportunity to serve your community, help make Newport Beach even better. We currently have seats open on the Library Board of Trustees, the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, the Arts Commission, the Civil Service Board, the Harbor Commission, Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission, and the Planning Commission. Application deadline is noon Wednesday, May 10th. So please submit those at newportbeachca.gov/ vacancy. Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, we're going on now to matters which council members have asked to be placed on the future agenda. So non-discussion item.
Yep. I need to clear a conflict on this because the area around it is within a certain amount of beat of the Pacific Club and has a membership there. It's a conflict. Thanks.
I have the same conflict.
Wonderful. Great. Councilmember Wigan has asked the council to consider amending the affordability level in the Newport Place Plan Community Development, standards from 30% to 15%. We have that conflict out, so this is a non-discussion item, so let's go ahead and take a straw vote with what we have here.
That would be unanimous for those five zero.
Wonderful. Wait for the other, if you can grab them. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 16. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items one through 16?
Nothing to pull, but in regards to the Balboa Chamber of Commerce's request to waive Council Policy B-13, I do have a conflict due to position I hold on a nonprofit's board of directors.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Nothing to pull but the same conflict on item number 14 as a board member of the Newport Beach Foundation.
Councilmember Grant.
Nothing to pull. I just want to make a brief comment about item number seven, about the funding for the Library Lecture Hall or the Civic Hall. Just wanted to call out that we are considering reallocating the ARPA funds that are currently allocated to that project to another project, but that there will be a process for amending the budget to swap that funding out, and that we are actively considering rebidding the project. So that we are rejecting the bids, but that there is a, you know, consensus that we'd be rebidding this project.
Wonderful. Councilmember Wigan.
Yeah, I'd like to pull, and I was going to do it based on the comments that Councilmember Grant gave, but I think we should just pull item seven just for discussion, and I'd like to pull item number five.
Okay. Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Protem.
None.
And I have none.
All right. With items number five and seven pulled by Councilmember Wigan, and item 14 showing conflicts from council members Kleiman and Stapleton, I move the balance to consent calendar.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Standing by Councilmember Avery. So we had items five and seven pulled. We're going to go out to public comment first on consent calendar.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I am pleased to see items pulled for discussion. I think discussion is always good. One item I wanted to comment on, which is item 13. Mayor Protem O'Neill brought attention to this at the study session. The item 13 is the, your expected confirmation of the general plan update steering committee's recommended appointments to fill vacancies on the general plan advisory committee. I hadn't really paid attention to the minutes, which I think are attached to confirm the item that you'd be voting on, but when I actually read the minutes, which I hadn't read before, I noticed there seems to be a discrepancy between the two. And if you look at the bottom of the first page of the minutes, which is attachment C, it says that at the March 22nd meeting, the item before the general plan update steering committee was discussion of applicants to fill three vacancies, and the action taken was to recommend to you three nominees and one backup. Now, just like all other elected and appointed bodies in Newport Beach and throughout California, the steering committee cannot take action except to the notice public meeting. The action appears to be three nominations, yet somehow the item before you is to fill two seats. So how did the list of three turn into a list of two without an intervening meeting? You might be asking the clerk for an explanation of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar items, one through 16, but not five or seven? Wonderful.
If you don't want me to comment on seven now, I can hold my comments, which are brief anyway. Mostly a thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Do you have an answer to Jim's question?
At the time, there were three vacancies when they did do the appointments. However, the third vacancy needed to be noticed according to the Madi Act and City Council Policy A2. So that vacancy, along with two others, that occurred after the first two vacancies will occur in the May meeting for appointments.
Excellent. So we have a, you mean a staff report on five?
No, we had a motion on the consent.
We'll take a vote on the items on the consent calendar.
It is.
Yeah, well, not fun when you're gone.
I know. Lawyer.
Jill's going to cry. Want that on the record.
Councilmember Grant, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
So it looks like we have item five pulled by Councilmember Wigan. Do you need a staff report? You just want to discuss that one?
No, I don't need a staff report. Maybe Mark, our utilities director, could come up and, you know, I think this is great. You know, we have done a very good job, and I just kind of want to highlight our city's efforts to work hard during, maybe even the county's efforts to plan for emergencies that we start seeing more and more often in this world we're in, and some of the changes that we at least have seen recently to our weather patterns and the great work of Mother Nature. Now, but the fact that we're at this position to do that, I just want to make sure that we don't fall short as a community, you know, saying, oh, well, we've relaxed these restrictions, and then we go back to just kind of simply wasting water. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of that, and I just wanted to hear, you know, kind of the effort that we think, you know, moving forward, how we're protected against the future, that we, isn't inevitable. We don't, or we, we're going to see more drought conditions in the future, and I think with our state's lack of storing water, we were in a constant crises. And so I just kind of wanted to bring it more as awareness to say, look, we're repealing this. It could come back relatively fast, and we don't want our residents to kind of give up, to continue the practice of what we're doing. And we had a little conversation this morning about where we're at on this, and I felt it was important maybe that Mark could just share a few tidbits with, you know, those listening and to get an understanding that we're not relaxing because we're giving up. We're relaxing just because we've kind of earned it.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Wigan. Mark Pacojevich, your utilities director. Yes, I think relaxing or relief is just the best way to categorize it as opposed to a cure. And here we have some relief with all of the rain and all the water that is put into storage. And then also with all the efforts, and we had a presentation, you know, last month with Orange County Water District and Orange County Sanitation District, all the efforts have been done to recycle water, and then all the conservation efforts that have been done through our, through our efforts, but also the state's efforts, right? I mean, you think of building codes and new faucets and sinks and toilets, everything is low-flush saving water. Anytime you put in new landscaping, you're putting in the most efficient sprinkler heads and drought-tolerant landscaping. Everyone's making that effort. But when we asked the residents and businesses back last June, hey, we need extra effort now because, hey, there's no water in sight. It was a dry summertime, and the city residents stepped up. We got another 10% savings in our water use and did really, really well, and I think it's something to be very proud of. Now, reservoirs are filling up. We've got tremendous amount of rain that came in, double the average in Orange County, double the average in Northern California. Colorado, above average, but still not enough to kind of fill up their reservoirs when you think of Lake Mead and so on. But they're getting there. And so it's not quite the cure-all, but it's definitely the relief we need. On our local efforts, we still are going to be promoting conservation, right? It's just, it's something that is just so easy to think about. Don't waste. Don't throw away. And we talked about Earth Day the other day, you know, activities too. And so we're going to continue to promote that in our ads, in our newsletters, and so on. And then also, we have, you know, our newest tool, which is our digital water meters. And so that is paying huge dividends in leak detections right now, where we get alerts where somebody's using water continuously all night long. And so that, we're able to then send them a notice, or if it's three days in a row, then we'll even go out there and knock on their door and say, hey, you're using a lot of water. Something's happening. And probably three out of four times, the resident has no idea that there's a leak on property. So we're helping them save that water. We're talking. Water conservation is also super important in Newport because of urban runoff. Talk about it at the Water Quality Committee. One of the main goals in water conservation there is to prevent urban runoff, which then helps our harbor and reducing pollution there. So we're going to stay on top of that, but we're going to be very much appreciative of this relief right now.
Any other council comments on this one? Seeing none. Let's go out to the public if we have any public comments on this item.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't know how many people actually read these staff reports. I had two comments about it. I certainly agree that being water-wise is always a wise thing to do, and we always need to remain vigilant. The last sentence in the last paragraph of the staff report is reminding the public of the permanent restrictions we have, whether there is a drought or not. And it mentions, among other things, that we have a prohibition on landscape watering between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And I think if anybody read this, I believe the intent is it's a prohibition on automated landscape watering during those hours, and the residents who might read this should not feel guilty about going out and watering their vegetables at noon if they're inclined to do that. And then the other thing I found remarkable at the top of that page, and I misread this, and I have to admit I misread it, it's mentioning the wet weather brought about 25 inches of rainfall, and I was surprised that the number was that big. So I went back and I looked at the National Weather Service for how wet this winter had been in Newport Beach, and it said we had 16 inches in the harbor, 18 inches at the airport. But then I looked more carefully, and apparently 25-inch is some kind of average for the Orange County watershed, if I'm understanding. But I don't know where the number comes from or how you'd even figure that out. Apparently, there's areas that must have had much more rain than we did that contributed to that average. But if you didn't have a rain gauge over the entire Orange County, I don't know how you'd know what the average is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I think there's about eight people that read all the staff reports. You and the seven of us. I'm just kidding. So we're going to bring it back up here, seeing no other public comments. Councilmember Wigan, did you have?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion on item number five, but I did want to come back and thank staff. We're a full-service city. We have our own water. We don't, we don't have to have like Costa Mesa where you have a separate election for directors of the Mesa Water. We have our own in-service, in-house service, and that just speaks volumes to what service... We have our own in-house service, and that just speaks volumes to what service we provide in this city. And I want to thank staff for their hard work helping us, but I also want to thank the residents who participated in the last few years to get us to where we're at today.
Wonderful. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by the mayor pro tem. Just take a vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Great. Let's move on to item number seven, pulled by Councilmember Wiegand. Do you need a staff report on this one?
I don't need a staff report, but I think it's important for the public to know what we're doing here. And I know Councilmember Grant just kind of voiced it in that kind of term, but I think there's some people here, maybe in the public too, that want to get an opportunity to say something so that we're hearing. I think a lot of time was spent on this issue with the previous council. And so just to simply put on consent, we have four new council members. I think it's important to kind of have a little greater discussion on it and then let the public know that we're not giving up on it. I certainly am not giving up on it. It's just a challenging time in this environment for builders. And I think we get an opportunity to see what the future holds here, but it's important that we use the funds that are available and on things that we don't let go to waste. So I think we want to at least voice up here that there is a commitment to moving forward with something and not just turning our back on the project.
Wonderful. All right, let's go out to the public then, get to see if we can get some public comments on item number seven. Now would be the perfect time. Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor Blom and council members. My name's Dorothy Larson. I am a past chairman of the Library Foundation Board here. The long name is the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation Board Chair, passed, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. That was a long time ago. Believe it or not, so far, I will be brief. I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this library lecture hall, civic auditorium, whatever it ends up being called. It's a very important landmark building for this city. It's going to be, it's going to be very useful for many, many users, including the foundation, of course. We bring in speakers, I'm sure you know, like Doris Kearns Goodwin, and just amazing people. And I hope you've all, I know most of you have had an opportunity, Brad in particular, to sit in the back of the room and see what it's like hearing renowned speakers in our current facility. So mainly, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work on this project so far, and I appreciate your comments tonight about moving forward. And that was it. I urge you to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, I don't think I need to introduce myself, but my name is Jim Mosher. And since you seven did read the staff report, even those of you who were not at the council at the time, who was appointed, would become aware that the city does have a library lecture hall design committee, and its tenure was indefinite. I believe it continues to exist until the project is actually completed. And so I was a little bit surprised that they did not have a recommendation to you about what to do about the bids coming in too high. And I just wanted to remind you that they exist, and perhaps you should be seeking their advice on future direction about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments on this item, we'll bring it back up to the dice. Councilmember Grant?
So to reestablish some of the comments that Councilmember Wiegand made, one of the things worth understanding from the public perspective, I think maybe the seven of us understand up here, is this reallocation of funds. And it was originally the plan proposed by a previous council, and I think actually by Council, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill, that the America Rescue Plan Act funds that were given or awarded to our city be used, I think $5 million of those funds be used towards this project, and that's how those funds were allocated. And there is a deadline to actually encumber the funds and to actually expend the funds. The deadline to encumber those funds under like an actual contract, not just a discussion about where they go, is from what I understand from staff, 12/31/24. So, you know, an entire basically year and a half from now, that those funds have to be encumbered under contract and then expended by 12/31/26. So in conversations with staff, I came to understand that the comfort level of actually putting those funds towards another project that may have a faster timeline might be a good use of those funds. And we are reallocating funds from the FFP to go to this project. So it's, the funds are fungible in that they're being swapped out. I didn't see the urgency in actually reallocating these funds necessarily yet, given that we have a year and a half to encumber them. And we don't have an actual contract for what the new use of these funds is going to be for, which are modifications to our city yard, which we talked about earlier. But I'm not against doing that. I think it's, you know, forward-thinking, and I appreciate that the staff is always trying to protect the city and make sure that we have adequate use of the funds that are given to us, back to us, our taxpayer money coming back. So I'm not against that. I just wanted to be clear that we are going to reallocate other funds so that at least the time being on the library lecture hall or the civic auditorium, or whatever we're calling it, will be at the same stage it was before this vote, that it'll have some sort of funding that's anticipated and that we are going to go out to rebid.
I'll just say a quick thing on this, you know, and it's, I love infrastructure projects. I think they add to the city. And I will actually quote one of the people who has come up and spoken in favor of this is that cities are forever. And building things, it's a wonderful thing to do, and it does get back to the community. And I am generally in great support of a civic auditorium. I think it adds to the civic center complex. I was not necessarily in favor of the bids that came back. And I think it's tough, you know, when our appraisals are so much lower than a bid that comes back. So I think by rejecting these bids and going out again, we get an opportunity to kind of look towards the future and see, one, if, you know, they were high at that time, one, if they're the same as they're going to be this next time around, or one, if we missed the envelope and they're going to go up more. And so I think it's just due diligence on our part. This isn't just the willy-nilly spending of funds. You know, it is every member of this community's money that we're spending, and it's important for us to remain fiscally conservative when we look at how we appropriate those. And so, you know, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill is famous for saying it's about needs, not wants. You know, I kind of live in a hybrid world of that. I like wants too, but I want to make sure that we're doing the due diligence to make sure that it's the right way to move about. So, you know, I think it's been echoed up here, we want to see projects get built. We want to see them get done. We just want to make sure we're doing them in the most responsible way, and that's kind of our job up here. So, Councilmember Avery?
Thank you. I think, you know, obviously, there's a lot of folks who want to see this happen. I personally don't think this civic center will be complete until it does happen in terms of what all that a civic center entails. And, you know, compared to a fire station or police station, you know, those are, you know, the most important things. And then a great city can do both. And I think, I firmly believe we'll get there, but I think along with dealing with all the things that the city has to maintain, take care of, and the challenges ahead, and being prudent, there's still a huge will to do this. But I also think, for some reason, I think we should get more help from people in this community who believe in the arts, who believe in the power of ideas and great programming. It is absolutely, it changes minds, it changes lives when you bring in people who are great speakers, have expertise, and there's a coming together of the community to hear these talks, which I've had the pleasure of doing a couple of times. It's really, on another level, essential to get out from off your couch and watching Netflix and come down and be with your fellow citizens and hear a live lecture. It's just entirely different, and it's very rewarding. And so I think it's on sort of quality of life side of things, very necessary. I have every confidence that it will happen, and I know all of us here want it to happen. It's just, it's a timing thing. And I do believe, I just think there's going to be a few people out there that are compelled to come forward and help the foundation kind of move the marker, which would further encourage the city to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments on this up here, we have a motion on this item?
Yes, I'll make the motion to move it.
Oh, okay. Go for a quick public comment on it real quick.
Real quick. My name's Craig Hudson, and I'm a resident here, and I just walked in off the street. I've witnessed libraries all over the world, and I think you've got one of the finest. I mean, I was in Washington, I was in Sacramento, and I'm very proud of what you've done. Hope this project continues to go through. I sat down and talked with the foundation head, understand some of the problems that you're confronted with, but keep going. Thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Wiegand. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Grant. Wonderful. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Wonderful. We now have public comment on non-agenda items. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Not looking here. Oh, okay. I see, seeing none, Jim. All right, let's move on to the public hearing. Item number 17, and there's a resolution number 2023-23, Community Development Block Grant, and 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. Do we have a staff report on this?
Good evening, Mayor Blom and City Councilmember Seymour Jurges, Community Development Director, and with me is Lauren Wooding Whitlinger. This is your annual Community Development Block Grant Program, the annual allocation. If you'd like Lauren to go ahead and do a presentation, it's about a few slides. If not, then we are here to answer questions.
We'd like a short presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, as Simone said, Lauren Wooding Whitlinger, here with a brief presentation on Community Development Block Grant. This is for your annual action plan, and that's an allocation of federal grant funding through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds are used to address or to assist low and moderate income persons in the community and to assist with community development, economic development in the city. This action plan is a one-year strategy to implement the city's five-year strategy, which is in the consolidated plan. The fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. The process that the city's undertaken so far is to issue a notice of funding availability. We did that back in January, and we opened the application period for about a month. We received applications in mid-February, and then a staff committee worked with a consultant to prepare the draft action plan. That action plan was posted March 25th for a 30-day public review, and now we have the public hearing in front of you. After the public hearing, the action plan will be submitted to HUD by the middle of Under the proposed, the upcoming fiscal year, there is a grant allocation of $399,099 from HUD for the program. There are statutory limits for how the money can be allocated, with 20% spent on program administration, 15% maximum for public services, and the balance of the project or the grant goes towards capital projects. For the upcoming fiscal year, we are proposing to spend the 20% maximum on program administration, and that also includes fair housing services. The public services would be allocated to Age Well Senior Services. They provide meals to homebound seniors in town at $30,000. $15,000 towards Families Forward, who provides homeless services to families with children. And the balance of the public services amount would be towards the city's motel voucher program, which is operated by the police department. And then, including the carryforward of $403,59 from previous years that was unspent, we would be using the capital project funding to provide an earmarked amount for the city's homeless shelter, which it operates with the city of Costa Mesa, of $200,000. $50,000 would be allocated towards an ADA upgrade at the Benita Creek Community Center. ADA stall for the electric vehicle charging stations that are being required by the Coastal Commission as part of the Balboa Pier parking lot remodel project. $229,000 would be allocated towards a future project that the Recreation and Senior Services Department would be undertaking at San Miguel Park to replace that playground with accessible structures. And then $150,000 would be used by Public Works to replace curb ramps throughout the city with ADA-compliant curb ramps. So the recommended next steps is to hold the public hearing, which is happening now, approve and adopt the action plan, and then the staff and consultant would work with, would prepare all the documents and submit those to HUD, and then work with the grant subrecipients to work through the program starting July 1st.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, staff. We have any comments up on the dice? Councilmember Kleiman?
So first, I just wanted to say thank you to staff. I know you put a lot of time into this program and, of course, assembling all this information for us tonight. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I'm supportive generally of all of the things that, all the programs that we're putting funds toward, but I just wanted to note, we on the Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee are just starting to get our arms wrapped around even just the services that the city has directly contracted for related to the issue. And I'm sure they can all tell you that I am not a big proponent of, you know, certainly duplication of efforts and also of motel voucher programs generally. I understand that it's a limited application here, and also that the Family Forward Grant is doing something that I don't believe we're doing elsewhere at this point in time, which is intervening for families before they could potentially become homeless. Of course, you know, supportive of that type of intervention, and I don't think it's duplicative. I would just comment that going forward, I would like to suggest that the Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee be more involved, because I understand this is kind of fully baked at this point, or just about fully baked with our rubber stamp approval tonight, but I would, I would like the opportunity to be participatory in this discussion for the next round.
Councilmember Grant?
Just a quick question. In the category of the public services where we are spending about $80,000, I'm just wondering, is there, I see that we are not granting to a South County program. So do we keep these funds within the needs for our city? Is that, is that how this works? It looks like there's only four, you know, requests, three of which we filled almost, almost, well, not necessarily completely, but do these funds stay in our city borders? Is that the purpose?
Yes, they do. That is, that is part of the requirement of the grant agreements with each of the recipients.
Okay. So for example, like the Age Well Senior Services, I'm all for giving meals on wheel seniors, but I'd like them, you know, to be located in our city as much as possible, or any of the others. Okay, great.
Wonderful. Seeing no more comments up here, let's go out to the public.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. What would a hearing be without a public comment? I agree with Councilmember Kleiman that it would be good for our Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee to be more involved in the homeless recommendations. I would suggest, however, that that committee's recommendation should be coming here for consideration by the whole city council and not be privately advising the staff on what should go in this report. As to the recommendations... As to the recommendations here for public services, looking at the staff report, I don't want to embarrass anybody, I was a little bit surprised to see that Age Well Senior Services will be providing meals to 100 residents who are part of our homebound senior citizen population, who make up approximately 24% of the Newport Beach population. I am part of the senior population, but I didn't, I didn't know there were so many of us who are homebound. So I think it's trying to say 24% are seniors, not 24% are homebound seniors. And then at the end of that paragraph, it's mentioning that we have a motel voucher program, I'm not sure I was even aware of that, that will be serving about 10 homeless people over the course of this action year. I would be curious to know, and you might be also, how many nights will it be providing lodging to those 10 individuals? I hope it's more than one night each. And then in the capital project program, it's very good to see that the city has finally come to paying off the loan that it had been paying off for every year, many years, so it's finally using some of this funding towards new projects. One of them is for handicap parking at the Balboa Pier. In future years, perhaps not even in this five-year plan, but when you re-envision the McFadden Square area, you might be asking if we have adequate handicap parking there for that pier. I think we have much less there than we do at the Balboa Pier, and this would be a possible use of funds in future years. Some random comments about the report itself. On page six of the report, it mentions COC without explaining what that is. You have to go to page 27 to find that. Page 21, it's mentioning that we're going to be using our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but I thought back in January, we learned that our Affordable Housing Fund had been all expended, and we actually disbanded the Affordable Housing Task Force of the city council. I think we have some coming projects, and we maybe will have a new Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I doubt we're going to be expending anything from that in the next year. And then on page 23, at the top of the page, it says that the Newport Beach Housing Authority does not administer Section 8 and does not own HUDD public housing. I'm not aware that there is even a Newport Beach Housing Authority, so perhaps that was supposed to say the city of Newport Beach does not administer Section 8. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think some of the clarifications we can adjust in that for the population. I think you're probably right there, Jim. There's not that many homebound people in Newport Beach, so I like it when you get up here and tell a little joke, though, that's fun. Okay, I'm going to bring it back up to the dais. Any other comments on this item?
No, but I read the same thing. Yes, I'm confident we're talking about seniors, not homebound seniors, but yeah, I saw the same thing. All right, I'll make the motion. I'll move staff recommendation.
All right, I'll second. Motion made by Mayor Protem, seconded by myself. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, we're going on to item 18, Resolution Number 2023-24, Initiation of an Amendment to the Newport Village's Planned Community Development Plan to Allow Recreational Uses Within Area 1. I'm going to need to recuse myself from this item based on a real property interest on Eldorado Lane, and Mayor Protem will be taking over.
Let's go ahead with a brief staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem and city councilmembers. With me is Jocelyn Perez, Associate Planner. If clerk's office can go ahead and post, we have an item real quick. So the item this evening is just asking your permission to go ahead and change the Newport Village Planned Community text. And so the planned community text are just zoning, special zoning for those areas. And you could see that on the right-hand side, Areas 1, 2, 3, and 5. So you're familiar with Area 3, which is the civic center and our library. Area 1 is the transit, the OCTA Transit District. And so right now, the, the PC text only allows it to be a transit facility. What we're asking for permission from the council is, are you okay with us going ahead and change that PC text to allow recreational facilities? And the thinking is, if you look at that, that transit terminal there, you see the outer ring, that's where the buses go. But you look inside that inner, inner part area where the parking is, and it's, and it's underutilized. You know, it's a very, very large parking lot area. You could see in this Google Earth image, not a lot of cars parked there. Even the transit authority knows that this is kind of an underutilized space. So we want to change the code to allow some type of recreational amenity. And our folks with Dave Webb and folks at Public Works had came up with an idea of maybe, maybe adding some pickleball courts there in the future. And again, you're not approving a pickleball project. The only thing we're asking this evening is to go ahead and change the PC text to allow recreational amenities. If you're comfortable with that, CDD would come back with a resolution with changing the text and allowing that recreational amenity. Dave Webb and the Public Works team will work through all the requirements for an actual project with regards to either pickleball or something else. And you could see that image there, they actually added some additional parking there. And that's all this item is.
And if I could add just very quickly, we have had some initial discussion with both OCTA and Irvine Company, and they're very supportive of continuing, continuing to pursue that idea. So that's, as part of doing this initiation, we will also continue those discussions with those groups. And I think it's a kind of an exciting way to have a, a mixed use of an area that's pretty underutilized and really meeting the demands that we've seen on the pickleball side, while also working together with our partner areas, agencies here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll note that we probably didn't tell people it was going to be pickleball, otherwise we would have had the chambers full. All right, councilmember Grant, followed by councilmember Kleiman.
I appreciate the comments by our city manager, and I also agree, this is an exciting project. It is something that the community is very anxious to have, which is more recreation. We have quite a bit of recreation, and it is very, very, very overutilized. Pickleball is fast-growing, and it's exciting for our community. It brings together all ages, you know, everybody from all different types of people that come to town or live in town, visitors. It's just a really feel-good kind of a thing for, as our city manager mentioned, an underutilized space. And in a city where we're fully, almost fully built out, we don't have a lot of open space, and we're trying to accommodate these kinds of needs, especially the needs that really hone in on the health and welfare of our community, not just the physical health, but the mental health and all of that. This is just a great way for us to repurpose, and I say that in the Spirit of Earth Day, which we just had, repurpose something, keep the, the good part of it, which is allowing the transportation and the access to our community, but melding in, you know, melting in this other aspect of recreation and health and, and, you know, safe, healthy lifestyle for our community. So I applaud staff in being so creative and coming to us with this idea. It really is ingenious way to, an ingenious way to utilize this property, and I'm very supportive in seeing it advance and hearing more about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo what councilmember Grant said. First to commend staff and the tremendous work they've done in a short period of time to get this project before us. I think we're all very excited to see some new energy brought to this area and, and really just offer another amenity to our community. We never have, we can never have too many opportunities for people to gather and be communal, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further, let's go out to public comment. Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved by, I think councilmember Kleiman beat you up. Okay. Moved by councilmember Grant, seconded by councilmember Kleiman. Let's vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
We'll wait just a moment for the mayor to come back.
Madam clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action, any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, beautiful. Tonight, we're adjourning in the memory of Gene Watt, and councilmember Wagen is going to go ahead and read that.
Yes, tonight, we adjourn in the memory of someone who was instrumental in shaping Newport Beach as we know it today, community and environmental leader, the Honorable Gene Watt. Gene passed away on April 16th at the age of 96. For nearly five decades, Gene was deeply involved in civic life and community service in Newport Beach. She served on this city council for two terms from 1988 to 1996. However, she is best known as a passionate and committed defender of the environment throughout Orange County. Gene was born in Pasadena in 1926, and her connections to Newport Beach began early. When she was five, her family began spending their summers on Balboa Island, which they enjoyed for many years. After studying to be a nurse, Gene moved to Newport Beach in 1953 with her husband, Dr. J. Watt. In 1974, she co-founded the group SPON, then known as Stop Polluting Our Newport, to take action against pollution that impacted Newport Harbor after major rainstorms. SPON now has a 50-year track record of advocacy going strong under the name Still Protecting Our Newport. Gene formed and led a number of grassroots organizations over the years devoted to protecting open space and beautifying natural resources. One of those groups was Friends of Harbors, Beaches, and Parks, which brought together environmental advocates from across the county to speak with one voice on common issues. In 2013, Gene was named Newport Beach Citizen of the Year, which is given to residents who have made a lasting and profound impact. Gene leaves behind an unmatched legacy that will long be remembered for her many contributions to our community. No services are being planned at the moment, but a celebration of life is being planned for the summer. With that, we adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of the Honorable Gene Watt.
Thank you. We are adjourned.